All right, welcome everybody to the April 27, 2016, Board of Selectmen and Sore Commission Meeting. Everyone is present except Mr. Ruchow. Let's see, first one, review warrant and final budget. Vote to close warrant.
So we need a motion? Are we going through each article or...
Yes.
Guess what? You're gonna go through each one?
We're gonna go through each other.
Okay. See if you have any questions.
Do we pass Article One, keep Article One?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Two.
We want to read what the articles are so probably we know.
Okay. Authorization to borrow in anticipation of revenue and to enter into a compensation balance agreement with a bank.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. At the top of the chart, this number three. Just one in different direction.
There it is. Article Three is Departmental Revolving Funds Authorization to see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds to certain town departments under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending or taking any other action relative thereto.
So moved.
I moved it. I'm just gonna read it. That we do the ESCO, WBPA, DV, Board of Health, Cemetery Trustees, Council on Aging, Planning Boards, Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, Parks, Planting Fields, Fire alarm, Hazmat, Recycling, Celebrations, Beeman Memorial, Library, Economic Development Task Force, Recreation Program.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I'll say.
Are any of these new or changed dollar amounts?
No, they're all the same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Four, Authorization to expend funds in anticipation of reimbursement of state highway assistance aid.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Five, Authorization to amend the personnel bylaw and to review the classification and compensation so as to provide employees' cost of living pay increases one and a half percent.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Six, Authorization to set the salary of elected officials to see if the town will vote to determine and fix the salaries of elective officers of the town shall receive the fiscal year 2017 in conformity with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108.
So moved. One exception, I think something should be like...
Fifty cents?
Fifty cents.
We're gonna dollar, by the way.
Fifty cents.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Municipal Light Board, they are separate from us, but they still get... Does that money come from us, Nancy, or does that money come from them?
Them.
Them, okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Seven, Authorization to transfer unexpended funds from fiscal year 2016 appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chart, do we have it yet?
We're still working on that list. It will continue to grow as we get closer to town meeting. We're still identifying sources of revenue that we can move around, but...
Six p.m. day of, probably it'll be done.
Probably.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Kevin, you have something?
No, that was my question too.
All right. Do we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Eight, Authorization to pay bills from a previous fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have any?
We have one. The total is four hundred and... $748. The mileage for the inspectors last year was not submitted, so we owe them $748 in total.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Article Nine, Authorization to appropriate money to the Sore Enterprise account for fiscal 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Ten, Fiscal Year 2017 Omnibus Budget Appropriation Article.
So moved, whatever it is.
Do I read it?
Are we gonna do that now?
We could go through it now, just... I could just tell you the changes since the last time.
Okay.
We've had two changes. One was a reduction in the computer capital line item by $5,000. The fire chief is gonna be purchasing one Tough Books from his FY '16 budget, so we only need one now in '17, so we reduced that by 5,000. And the second change is with the library. We needed to adjust their budget upwards of $3,384. They received their grant that needs to be used by the end of this fiscal year. They thought that they could use some of those monies next year. They cannot, so we need to give them just a little... a little bit right there. And by doing those two changes, we're reducing the town administrators' recommended budget by $1,616. Everything else remains the same.
You raise your hand.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Any other discussion? Review?
Can I just ask a question? At the end, are we gonna just go through that budget so people understand kinda what we're spending the money on?
Sure.
Maybe read each line. I don't wanna... Maybe we can get the whole rest of it done, then do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just so...
Is that right?
Yeah, no, that's fine with me.
Do we have a motion?
Yep. He motioned, I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to appropriate funds from the community preservation revenues.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twelve, Vote to appropriate funds from capital improvement purchases.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Has anything been added to that? I sent an email today. They are still working on their list. They expect to have it done within the next week and a half.
Do you know if they've decided on the generators?
I have an email into someone at MEMA, and I sent them the specifications for the three generators to see maybe if there's a grant available, any grant funds. That's what we're doing so far. I haven't heard... I sent the emails this afternoon on the capital, and they're not there yet.
So the CIB has not voted on those as of yet?
They have not voted.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I would just have one comment. It seems that we get this number about a half an hour before the town meeting, when we never have a chance. Oh, we're gonna have to have a special meeting if we wanna review it, if we wanna talk about it. I think we really need to ask them to get it done. I don't even mean even for tonight, but even by next week.
Sure.
You know, in the future, I'm not...
We asked them that last year when this thing came up. We asked them the same thing. We asked them to have it for us before we have the final thing, so we know what we're gonna talk about at town meeting.
It's nice to know what we're buying before we buy it.
Remember last year when the dump truck came up, the same discussion came up?
Yeah, and then the pickup truck the year before.
Yeah.
And it's always the night of that we get the final.
So we're gonna ask them...
I don't know, it would be a guess, but I know we have a couple meetings coming up. I could shoot an email off tomorrow and ask if they can get us something for our meeting next Wednesday.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Article Thirteen, appropriate to fund an elderly community services program.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. There is one change on that, just to let you know. We are now going to be paying the participants $9 per hour. In the past, they received $8 per hour. We found that our number was a little low in comparison towns, so we upped it.
All right. Number fourteen, appropriate funds in parks to see if the town will raise and appropriate to transfer from available funds to somewhere wanting to purchase fertilizer, pesticides, use of parks, or take any other action relative thereto. Didn't we...
So moved.
Second.
Well, we're gonna look and see if we can do fertilizer ourselves, or somebody's gonna try to get certified?
We don't have anyone at this time certified to be an applicator, and we're doing the same thing we did last year. We're going to, under the FY '16 appropriations, when we move budget numbers around, we're gonna put $5,000 for '16, and we're gonna have the article for '17.
How much do we...
$5,000 in both. Is that what we spent last year, Nancy? Last year, I believe it was $4,000, but the prices have gone up. But if we had somebody who applied it, we could just buy the product and we could...
Is there a reason this isn't in the... just in the base budget?
This is the way it's always... My understanding, this is the way it's always been done. That's a really good question.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
It would seem to make sense to put this in the base budget rather than appropriate...
Didn't it used to be always in the highway department budget originally? And then it got taken out?
Used to be.
Back in the old days, it was in there.
Okay.
Old, old days.
I don't wanna go back to this.
We don't need to change it this year, but for next year, it would make sense to look into it.
Sure, we can certainly, yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Article Fifteen, Authorization to transfer funds for the cemetery sale of lots account.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Sixteen, Vote to appropriate funds from community preservation fund projects as a recommendation by Community Preservation Committee.
So moved.
Second.
You want to discuss anything that's unusual?
No, but I mean, I'll just briefly tell you what we're doing. The top one is, they put a fence at the baseball field where football team used to practice. Football team doesn't have a practice field anymore, so this is going to expand, essentially build a practice field, not just for use by the football team, but it'll be an additional field at the park. And then the one below it is to drill an artesian well to hopefully be able to irrigate the fields. It won't do the entire park, but to irrigate the fields through well water. If it does work, there will be other asks for additional wells, so that we don't have to use municipal water to irrigate the fields. And, you know, an artesian well is like drilling for oil. You don't know if you're gonna hit something. But if it does work, they'll probably come back and ask for additional wells, because in the grand scheme of things, it will save a ton of money, and the fields will look a whole heck of a lot better.
Well, that seems like a good idea.
Can I ask a quick question? The first one, is it up in the back where the pool was?
Where the old pool was, yep.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Seventeen, Vote to extend the Sunset Clause on previously reauthorized appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Eight, inappropriate funds for the Honor Plaiming Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. The ballpark number on that, as of today, is about $20,000.
Article Nineteen, Transfer and Change Use of Mixed Property.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty, Appropriate Funds to Develop Conceptual Plans for a Senior Center.
So moved.
Second.
How much is that?
Do we have a dollar? $10,000.
$10,000?
You asked to get a quote from Paul Linek, and that's what he gave. He brought it to FISB, and we said we'd go ahead with the $10,000. That was...
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article... excuse me. Article Twenty-One, Accept Gifts From the Fire Association.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Two, Authorization to petition the legislation to amend the special act to establish an appointed town clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-three, Authorization to amend the personnel bylaws so as to create a position of recreated workers for the recreation department.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a different pay scale for this?
They are going... no, they are going to go in grade one that we currently have, and I've spoken to the recreation director already, and she's comfortable with the one, two, and three scale that we already have.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Four, Authorization to amend the personnel bylaw to accept current year's school physicals for recreation workers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Five, Authorization to amend the general bylaws by adding a wetlands protection bylaw.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a brief explanation of what this is?
This is... I'm on the conservation board. It's something so we can actually enforce the bylaws. We have some issues with enforcement, and people are doing some things that shouldn't be doing, and we have no way to stop them. So now this gives us some enforcement rights. Briefly, we've been doing this about a year and a half. We have Planning Board's office quite a bit in a good discussion. We think we've come to a good agreement for everybody.
Thank you.
Is that the group that came to us last selectmen's meeting, or is that a different...
Yes.
The same one? Okay. That's what I thought.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Four, Twenty-Six, Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Can I read this?
This goes with this. We'll do the same thing. It's like seven pages later.
That's why I was reading it twice.
Yeah, you don't wanna read it. Oh, gosh.
Article Twenty-Six, Authorization to amend the West Wilson zoning bylaws, Section 5.6, signs and billboards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-Seven, Authorization to enter a lease for the municipal light plant for a solar project on a former landfill.
So moved. This hasn't committed us to any finalization.
Right, right.
This is the start.
This is just so if we do come to a agreement with them.
Oh, yeah, this is for the 25-year thing, right?
Yeah.
For 20 years or whatever.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, Authorization to appropriate funds for the stabilization fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to appropriate funds for the capital investment fund.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Petition the article, Article Thirty, Authorization to amend Article Fourteen of the general bylaws?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, I'm forgetting. Yeah. Twenty-nine of general bylaws.
So moved. We have to leave it on there anyway, so...
Yes.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
You wanna read it?
Mr. Chairman, just one question. I had previously sent to the board an email from Town Council regarding the new fire department union contract, and whether or not the board wanted to have a separate warrant article authorizing those funds for the first year of the contract, or if we just wanna follow the past practice of having those funds be built into the FY '17 budget.
Any discussion?
I would think it would make sense to just build it into the FY '17 budget. There's no reason to complicate it.
Yeah, we'd never done it the other way.
Right. I can't see a benefit.
In the 1800s, we did, maybe.
So perhaps we could just have a vote of the board, you're not included?
I moved. Don't we not... Don't we include it in the general budget?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. So you want me to...
I don't know, it just maybe would be nice to read over the budget.
Yeah.
Have the town administrator read over it, or somebody read it.
Would you like to read?
I'd be glad to. Okay, so I just read the general category and the total one?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Total moderator, $51. Total selectmen, $6,155. Total town administrator, $181,275. Total finance committee, $35,000. Total finance director, $160,835. Total town audit, $25,000. Total assessors, $99,0018. Total treasurer-collector, $208,357. Total town council, $80,000. Total data processing, $111,665. Total town clerk, $81,628. Total elections and registrations, $23,420. Total planning board, $3,282. Total public safety headquarters, $47,530. Total town hall building, $72,495. So the total general government category would be $1,137,011. Under total police, $1,460,406. Total fire, $667,535. Total public safety communications, $283,450. Total building inspector, $83,707. Total sealer of weights, $1,775. Total emergency management, $5,000. Total animal control, $10,411. Total public safety line would then be $2,512,284. Total education is $11,317,756. Then we go into DPW. For the total streets and parks, we have $720,473. Total smoke... excuse me, total snow removal, $112,000. Total street lighting, $64,169. Total trash removal and tipping, $396,417. Total cemetery, $60,890. With the total public works being $1,353,949. Total board of health, zero. Total council on aging, $96,581. Total veterans services, $101,000. So total human services would be $196,582. Going into library, we have total library at $384,423. That's the total for the library category. Total for other culture and recreation is zero, so the total for culture and recreation category is $384,423. For total debt service, $1,209,136. Total intergovernmental, which includes regional planning and Watches at Earth Day Collaborative, is $5,747. For employee benefits, the total employee benefits risk management is $4,569,914. Total for ESCO leases and expenses, $225,312. So the total FY '17 budget as proposed is $22,912,114.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Very good.
Nice work.
It's all due to Nancy. This is her hard work.
All right. So now, you can vote to close the warrant.
Vote to close the warrant.
I vote to close the warrant.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hope to have warrant posted.
So I will vote to have the warrant posted on... I have a date, Nancy. I need it signed.
What day? You ended?
We're hoping it's gonna go on Friday, Friday morning. This Friday? Yes. Okay. When does it have to go out, Nancy? When's the last? We always post two weeks in advance.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Signed motions for town meeting. Anybody have any preference?
You just go one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four.
Can I just go like breakdown?
Yeah.
Because you have some, like Pat has.
George Bernardin is gonna move both of the...
Can't speak.
No, the CPC ones.
Yeah.
So the other ones, I don't know about any, but those two, he said, yeah, he'll do it again this year.
So...
So Chris, would you number one?
Yeah. Well, Kevin, what's up? Would you be number one? Is that it?
That's fine.
You were number one.
Sharon, number two?
Yeah.
Pat three. And Pat's four.
They catch up. Number three goes a couple things, hold on. Number four is Pat.
Yeah. Chris will take five. Kevin six. Sharon, seven. myself eight. Pat nine. Chris ten. Kevin eleven.
Nope, that's George.
George is, I'm sorry. And so twelve two?
The CIB usually does twelve.
Okay, so that's gonna be...
So Ray.
Ray, yeah. So thirteen is...
That's Kevin.
Kevin.
Kevin's thirteen. Sharon is fourteen.
Is that you?
George again.
George.
Sixteen is George.
No.
Fifteen would be...
The cemetery.
Would be... would be John.
Yeah, fifteen.
And then sixteen is...
Would be George, right?
Yeah.
So seventeen's Pat. Eighteen is Chris. Nineteen is Kevin.
That's so fitting.
What?
What? What'd you say?
That's so fitting, the way you...
Twenty, twenty is John.
Oh, gosh.
And then twenty-one, uh, twenty-two is Pat. Twenty-three is Chris. Twenty-four is Kevin. Twenty-five is Sharon. Actually, um, yeah, we're gonna make it, but someone's gonna speak up about it.
I gotta read all those little pages?
No, no, you're gonna introduce it, you're gonna make motion, and someone's gonna speak about it.
Okay, that's like, are you kidding me?
All right.
There's more pages on that than they are for the whole articles.
Took us quite a while to get there.
I'm glad I wasn't at your meeting. Twenty-six?
Twenty-six is, uh...
That would be the planning board. Would you like to do that one?
Twenty-six is...
The planning board will do that?
Planning board?
Yes.
Okay. That's me.
You wanna do that one?
I did one, so I agree.
Yeah, 'cause you're on that committee.
Yeah, okay.
So, Nancy, we're gonna, okay, flip, okay?
Sure.
Then you take, uh... Twenty-seven, right?
Sure, yeah.
Pat's twenty-eight. Chris is twenty-nine. Kevin's thirty.
No, the, the thirty will be read by, will be read by the people, the petition.
Oh, that's right, okay, okay.
I'm done.
Is that it?
Can't remember if it worked out either.
It worked out either.
When does that ever happen?
Let's just hope everybody shows up.
All right, so we need a motion to accept those assignments.
So I moved that we accept the assignments that Mr. Hadley just made.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
And approve town meeting matters.
I make a motion that we approve town meeting mailer?
Mailer.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody get a chance to read, there was an email today?
She emailed. I, um, now that the warrant is approved by the board, what I'm going to do is I'm going to do a second sheet and list all of the articles, so people are aware.
We've done that before.
We have, we have, I think it's helpful.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Nance, when will that go out to the public?
I volunteers are gonna be here Monday and Tuesday, so I'm expecting it. I'd like to do it next Wednesday or Thursday. I didn't want to send it up too far in advance, and...
Okay.
Yeah, Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
It will be posted everywhere.
Right, right, but we won't have all the dollar figures by the time that goes out, correct? Like on the capital? Okay.
But those are, we send the motions anyway.
Oh, that's right, it's just, okay, sorry.
We never include those.
Yep.
All right, all in, all in favor.
Aye.
And, uh, motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
I send all those papers.
I bought tickets about ten years running, knocking on my door. It's the first year I went.
They gave a credit, and they gave a pass.